All right, good evening. It's 6:30, so I will call the meeting to order. The first thing we have on our agenda is public comments, if anybody would like to make a comment. Okay, the next thing we have is agenda review.
We have a total of three consent items at this point for number seven, so this is one, there's three.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're all set? Oh yes, and actually, thank you, yep. And actually, we're gonna move our student report up a little bit, so that you can get out of here a decent hour, okay? You're welcome. The next thing we have is the TRS Student Council.
All right, I am very pleased to welcome and introduce our TRS Student Council. These are a portion of our membership, and they wanted to come and share some of the wonderful things that they've been doing over the course of this year.
Hi, my name is Naya Rodriguez. I've been in the Student Council for two years, and these are some of our Student Council members: Lydia Smitsin, Kaliana Graham, Kinsey Foss, Rowan Bronstein, Kalen Murphy, Addison Frame. Rowan will give you the Student Council overview.
The Student Council serves as an important bridge between students in the school community. Our council undertakes a variety of activities aimed at enhancing school spirit and fostering a sense of community among students. We meet every Tuesday morning before school to discuss important matters, plan upcoming events, and collaborate on projects that benefit our school and community. During our meetings, led by Ms. Kachau and Ms. Coletti, we follow a structured agenda that includes a diverse range of activities. From designing colorful flyers to discussing essential leadership skills, each session is focused on empowering us as student leaders.
I'm going to talk about how to join Student Council. To become a member of the Student Council, students must first volunteer and gather signatures from four different teachers. Additionally, each prospective member is required to write an essay explaining their motivation for joining the council. Once accepted, our primary goal is to assist and support our educational community, as well as our town and the greater New Hampshire community. However, being part of the Student Council involves much more than just these responsibilities.
Kinsey, why don't you share your experience joining the Student Council?
Hi, I'm Kinsey Foss, and I'm in 5th grade, so this is my first year in Student Council. In order for me to join the Student Council, I had to go around to all four of my 5th grade teachers and ask if they thought I would be a good Student Council leader. If they said yes, I think you would make a good Student Council leader, then they would sign my paper. Once I got all of my teacher's signatures saying that they thought I'd be a good leader, I wrote a small essay explaining why I wanted to be on the Student Council. Firstly, I wanted more responsibility at school, and I wanted to make a good impression for my first year.
The benefits of first participation. Participating in Student Council provides numerous benefits that contribute to a personal growth and development. Members have the opportunity of developing leadership skills. In today's world, youth leadership is more critical than ever. Being a part of Student Council helps us cultivate these skills. Seeing beyond schoolwork. Engagement in Council activities allows us to broaden our perspectives beyond academic responsibilities. Learning the value of teamwork. Working collaboratively with peers teaches us how to effectively communicate and cooperate in achieving common goals. Building a network of opportunities. The connections we make through Student Council can lead to further opportunities and collaborations. Giving back to the community. Engaging in community service fosters a sense of responsibility and encourages us to contribute positively to society.
Being a part of Student Council members equips us with a diverse set of skills and experiences that shape us into responsible citizens while keeping us by helping us understand the interests of society. School spirit and fundraising activities. One of our key responsibilities is to plan and promote school spirit events. We typically begin by voting on themes for Spirit Week, after which we design and color flyers that are displayed around the school and featured in the TRS newsletter. In addition to Spirit Week, we organize bake sales and fundraisers throughout the school year. Our first bake sale typically occurs in October, coinciding with our soccer games, and our final sale is in May during our baseball and softball games. As a matter of fact, we have one this Thursday. We bake a variety of treats, including cookies and cakes, and on the day of the event, we enthusiastically sell our goodies around the field. Talk about going around the field and selling goodies to the crowd. Some people even cooperate with us, saying, "Keep the change or give us a donation because we work very hard for a very good cause."
Student engagement is a priority for us, and we organize events that foster a sense of community among different grades. One of the highlights of our year is the Fall Dance exclusively for 7th and 8th graders, which we eagerly anticipate. Additionally, we host movie and game nights for 5th and 6th graders, providing opportunities for younger students to engage socially.
Throughout the year, we also run candygram campaigns. With our holiday season, candygram grams begin particularly popular. Just last year, one student purchased a candy cane for each member in the 8th grade, resulting in a remarkable 86 candygrams to prepare. This year, we successfully sold 650 ghost pops for Halloween and 356 candygram grams during the holiday season, and 320 fun dips for Valentine's Day. This showcases our dedication and commitment to making these events successful. Last year was my first year in Student Council. I never sold candygrams before. I was really enthusiastic about the whole thing. I wanted to help. So, we sell these candygrams during our lunch, so this means we have to split the time between eating and selling. We usually go around table by table, reminding students about the candygram. Once we have sold, we have to prepare these candygrams and tape their message to a candy cane or fun dip, and on the delivery date, we have to pass them out.
Community service and school events. The Student Council actively collaborates with various community service initiatives, such as those organized by the PALS organization, and provides important school events like the 8th grade graduation. We also take pride in reading daily announcements at our school and assisting with any other events as needed. This year has been particularly fruitful for us, as we have worked diligently to make a positive impact. Our efforts have allowed us to donate to several organizations, reinforcing our commitment to community service.
For example, this is what we have donated this year: $1,000 to the Food Bank of Community Action Program of Pembroke, $200 to the New Hampshire Food Bank, $200 to each grade for books, $800 in total for books.
Last year, we donated to the same thing as she said, as she just read about, but we also donated to the SPCA Live and Let Live Farm, where they take care of stray or neglected animals and Wings of Wildlife Bird Sanctuary in Hennecker. They are a rescue service caring for injured birds.
Speaking of, we wanted to explain a little more about how we chose these organizations. A Student Council member brings up an organization in need that they have heard of. Then, the whole Student Council takes a vote if we should donate to said organization. If we all come to an agreement that we would, we look at what funds we have. For example, a Council member told us their story with an injured owl, and that gave us the idea to donate to Wings Wildlife and Bird Sanctuary in Hennecker. They needed money because a recent storm brought a lot of birds in need to their sanctuary. We have also donated to our local food bank. The Food Bank of the Community Action Program of Pembroke sent us letters and pictures showing us what they did with the money that we donated. Besides buying food items for the pantry, they bought much-needed shelving and carts. They explained to us that many times, people came to the food bank with a truckload of food items to donate, and it takes them forever to unload the truck, besides it being hard work. Therefore, they bought a big cart to facilitate fast and easy movement of items. We are very happy to have helped them.
Coming Leadership Workshop. This Friday on May 9, we are looking forward to an exciting Leadership Workshop Day, conducted by high school Student Council members along with Ms. Harvey. This workshop promises to be a valuable experience for further enhancing our leadership skills and providing us with insights in effective council operation.
In conclusion, being a part of Student Council is a rewarding experience that not only enriches our school community, but also aids in our personal development as responsible and engaged citizens. We would look forward to continuing our efforts and making this year the best yet, and to go on participating in the Student Council at the high school as we progress in our school years. We appreciate your time and attention. Have an amazing evening.
Thank you guys very, very much.
And congratulate you on all the good work you've done. Some of you, I think, will be running Pembroke Academy someday, so keep it up. I know the Student Senate is always looking for leaders, so just keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. So on that, we will jump ahead and do student report.
Hi, so not a whole lot of news to report from Senate. Mostly topics that I discussed at the last board meeting. We did hold our elections for next year's class office positions today. That went off, to my knowledge, without a hitch, so good news there. Once the new Senate and the new offices convene, Senate will also hold our Executive Council elections, which elects officers within Senate. I believe nominations for that will be May 22, I want to say, whatever the Tuesday of that week is, and then the elections themselves will be the 30th. We also have the Class Day BBQ coming up. I mentioned that the last time I spoke to the board. And Senate is currently in communication with a few local grocery stores, so that we can find some donations as far as, I think, hamburger rolls, chips, and condiments are what we're looking for. And I know Ms. Fontaine, our Senate advisor, has a contact at Shaw's that she's speaking to about that.
Awesome, thank you very much. You can hang out, but you're more than welcome to do your homework and study for your test. Thank you very much for coming, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
I know.
Yeah, we're back to normal now. Night.
That was nice for a little while.
I know, I was like taking...
Yes, thank you. All right, number five, we have minutes of our previous meeting from April 1st. What did I do? No, that's okay. Minutes of the previous meeting from April 1st. Anyone? Okay, go ahead, Jean.
All right, motion to approve?
I'll second. Does anybody have any questions, any comments, corrections? No? All those approve of approving the minutes from the 4-1 meeting? Please say aye.
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 Aye, that's all of us. All right, we'll move along to board reports, and the first one we have is principal's report, and we will go with Three Rivers first. So, Student Council, we're very excited to have them come tonight and talk to you guys about all the things that they do. Like they mentioned, they're very much looking forward to Friday, and they're at work with PA Student Senate. So, we're looking forward to, you know, seeing the two groups grow together. We recently had our DC and camp trips, and they were amazing. I went on the DC trip, so I know firsthand that it was an amazing trip. And I've heard lots of great things about the camp trip as well, and how that went, and how great the kids were at camp, and then at DC as well. So, those are two huge events for TRS that are done, and how we're moving on from. The Students' SCA Behind for both trips also worked on various projects while they were in the building. You know, one to note was an egg drop competition for our 8th grade group. So, each set of students had to protect their egg in some way, and then they dropped it from various heights to see how long their egg would last and remain intact. And there was, you know, a very clear winner, and they were very excited to, you know, take home that honor of protecting their egg. The top of the roof, TRS's roof. It was pretty impressive. Josh knows nothing. PALS, that's okay. PALS has been in our building all week, doing amazing events for us, for Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, rolling a cart around the building to make sure every teacher gets a snack or a treat. They set up stuff in the teacher's room today, and we have, you know, the next three days of different things that they have planned for us, so thank you so much to PALS. They are amazing and are doing so many things for us, even outside of Teacher Appreciation Week, but we very much appreciate them as well. As far as, you know, TRS business, we are starting to prep for, like, beyond this school year at this point, so, you know, we kind of have our toes in two different years. So, we are planning our summer programs. We have ESY and Title Summer Programs. Our 4th graders are coming to visit on May 29th, so they can get the full tour of TRS and see what it's gonna be like as 5th graders next year. We get to, you know, welcome them and get them into the TRS family. And we're working hard to fill various staff positions. So, that's made a busy spring as well. Anybody have any questions, TRS? I know you guys usually do a parent night for incoming 5th grade parents. Has that been scheduled, or? Yes, it has. So, it's actually gonna be different. So, the kids are coming on the 29th, and the parents are gonna come June 2nd, so the following Monday. Monday, June 2nd. Great, thank you. Yep. And we will publicize that in various ways.
General question. Does the school always schedule the environmental camp and the DC trip in the same week? Has that been like a historical thing?
So, that has always been scheduled that way, except for one year. Last year, they went two different weeks, because we were unable to get our normal 6th grade camp trip during that same week, but I think that's the only year that it has not run that way.
So, it works better when it's the same?
Yes.
Curious.
A lot of families love that too, especially when they have a 6th grader and 8th grader.
I like seeing, you know, as much as education has changed the egg drop thing, though, we did that when I was in elementary school.
Yeah.
Except we had a helicopter.
Okay. Can you get us a helicopter?
I looked right at him for that.
A helipad. I know.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, my cousin flies the Blackhawks down there in Concord. We need to get a helicopter. That'd be fun.
I think it was just a parent that worked for a helicopter company, so it worked out that way, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's cool.
Thanks, Jean, yeah.
No, that's awesome.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Your career day. Oh, that's cool. Anybody else? I'm glad the trips are over too. A few white hairs, it's all good. Next, we will do Hill School.
Every day. Similar, a lot of the same things that TRS chatted about. We're winding down for the year, so it's like six, seven weeks of just so many things happening, and it goes fast. Very fast. We have Thursday, this Thursday night, we have our kindergarten parent information night. We give them some basic info about what kindergarten will be like. It's a parent-only event, if possible. And then, we will, we have various, we have like a kindergarten over the summer, like a kindergarten couple, we're gonna do two weeks this year, where we bring them in. Anybody who kind of qualifies or is able to, if they haven't attended like a daycare or a preschool, to just get them acclimated to the building. So, this is the first step. So, we have this, we have our summer, and then we'll have our meet and greet. All aboard is gonna be wrapped up next year a little bit differently. We tend to do, we've done it in the past, where we have a meet and greet for everybody, and then the first day of school is all aboard for kindergarten. Bus company's not able to support that this year due to the calendar, but we've worked it out where they're still gonna be able to do, the families are gonna ride the bus, because that's a really important piece for the kinders, so we're gonna do it all on the meet and greet day. It'll just, we'll stagger the time, so kindergarten will come in, and then we'll have the other grade levels. So, we're able to work that out, so they still have that experience. But then it will be full, all grades, K through 4, will start on the same day next year, so it worked out really well all around. Next week, we have our Spring Arts Night on May 13th. That's where we have a concert, we have our art show. I know Library Media also has some things they've been working on. It's a little bit different than in the past, so they'll be, again, very excited that it's over, but very excited to share all of the things the kids have been doing with everybody. It's kind of like, the way we equated it was, we did a curriculum night this year for literacy and math with the grade levels. This is their kind of curriculum night, where they get to showcase everything they've been doing. And kind of, we really did enjoy the feedback we got from that, and being able to communicate to everybody what it looks like to be a learner. We got a lot of really good feedback, so that's something that we're gonna kind of keep on going with all of the different areas. SAS testing starts next week. We do two days of reading, and the next week, we do two days of math, or writing, and then the next, we do two days of math. We spread it out, give the kids breaks, it's first thing in the morning. And then, again, PALS has been in our building for staff appreciation. Huge shout out to them. They always put together, like, phenomenal five days for everybody. They come in and they fully decorate the staff lunchroom, and then they have like a menu of things that they do every single day. And it's definitely appreciated. They also have been supporting field trips for us in particular. They have funded a field trip for every single grade level. They pay admission to the different places that they go, and they're also, they fund like a puppet show for kindergarten. They come in and they have a puppet here that, or the kids love it. It's like complete, they're just laughing for like 45 minutes constant. You hear kindergartners just shrieking. So, they really do enjoy that. And those are kind of the big things coming up as we wind down the year.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for Hill? All right, Pembroke Academy.
Okay, good evening. I was going to say that our spring sports season is off to a good start, but the fields are in tough shape. They're pretty saturated, and Freddie's doing the best job he can of rescheduling, but it's just been very challenging, I think, for every school throughout the state. I did want to mention, with the passing of Sam Marston of Marston Transportation, he was the co-owner and bus driver for really all of our sports teams, and there was a really good representation from the PA community at his wake, to include many student athletes who really grew fond of Sam and appreciated his support throughout the years. The Pembroke Academy players will open their curtain this weekend for "Then There Were None," the classic Agatha Christie mystery. As Campbell mentioned, we did have student speeches today for our class officer elections, which will conclude by the end of the week, and those did go very smoothly for all of our grade levels. We did celebrate five graduating seniors who signed on to be college athletes. Fred put on kind of a signing day event for them, and that was really nice. We had 43 band and chorus students who went to Disney, and were, they participated in Disney's music education programming, where they had workshops in a studio, and they worked with the team down there, and that was a great experience. I'd like to just mention Danielle French, who has taken on the standardized testing coordination this year, and this is a particularly challenging time of year, given, you know, she's got SATs for the juniors, PSATs for, you know, that's an elective, so there's a group of sophomores that do that. And then, we are getting right into AP testing this week and next week, and science testing as well. And we have, our science department helps out with the facilitation of the science testing. Our hiring season is in full swing, and with all of the vacancies that we do have, I just want to highlight that we always try to have a student representative on our hiring teams for those, and that's always been a great experience for the students, and we've always gotten good feedback from the prospective candidates too. So, that's just been something that we've continued to do this year, and it's gone really well. The Pembroke Academy trustees met recently, and we awarded trustees scholarships to 10 graduating seniors and for alumni. And lastly, you know, Derek and I continue to kind of work on transition work for him. He came in for a day a few weeks ago, and I've been sharing a lot of documents with him. He now has a school email account and school Google stuff, so I'm just sharing a lot of stuff with him, and he's planning on coming back on the 20th and meeting with the Pembroke Academy Leadership Team and helping to schedule the Pembroke Academy Leadership Team meetings in the summer. Looking forward to that.
I had a question. I just, I'm thinking. Did we have the team come to Pembroke Academy from the NIESC?
Yes, we did.
Did they like our, I know, I don't think we talked about it, did we?
You know what? I'm not sure we did.
I was like, wait.
That's probably something I should be talking about. That went very well. They, we haven't received their report yet. They spend, their goal when they leave is to have a rough draft of the report done, and then the chair and co-chair kind of continue to work on that, get guidance from NIESC, and then they send that to us. You know, it's gonna be about a month from the visit. However, they always conclude those visits with a faculty meeting, and the feedback from the chair and co-chair was very positive through that, and really emphasized that, you know, that the staff should look forward to getting that report, because there will be a lot of really good feedback in there, so we were really pleased with how that went.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Questions? No? I was like, wait, I gotta count the weeks. Have we had a meeting? All righty, next we have facilities report.
Good evening. First off, the facilities department was very happy to support the access to the roof of the egg drop at Three Rivers School, and couldn't believe the egg actually lasted, so happy to support that and find that out tonight. Next, the crew and facilities were very busy over the April break. Uh, specifically, our crew was busy on sand cleanup. Um, our facilities take a beating, for lack of better words, throughout the winter, trying to get our pavement down to tar, um, in the ice and the snow away, so all the student and staff and general public, um, can be safe. So they, they, historically, we come in on a weekend, we blow all the sand back onto the sidewalks, um, in prep for the street sweepers to come. Um, they were faced with all this challenging rain, and quite honestly, they did a tremendous job. So, very proud of the crew for everything they do and how hard they work for us. With that, all three schools had their parking lots swept over the break. Um, all three schools had their catch basins vacuumed and cleaned over the break. Um, so all that sand, if it's, um, hasn't stayed on top of the surface, a lot of that sand goes into those basins. So it's very important to clean those and keep that water moving specifically, uh, for times like we're in right now to, to keep everything good and going. Uh, PA and Three Rivers had their gymnasium bleachers inspected. Uh, much of our crew, back onto our crew, much of them were able to take time off. I find it very important for them to take as much time off as they can. Um, it's very easy to do it when the schools are, are on, uh, break. Um, and many of them take pride of taking that time during that break, so they can be here doing what they need to, while everybody's here to make sure the schools are open the next day. Uh, the crew that was here in that stayed here, um, at any given time, they were all up at the Hill School. We, they took on a great project of stripping and waxing and painting, uh, the gymnasium floor at the Pembroke Hill School. Quite honestly, it was our worst floor in the district. And I'm proud to say it's not our worst floor in the district now. So, it's very clean, it's very bright, it has fresh lines for the gym class and for what those students need within that gymnasium. Um, and our crew spent tireless hours up there, the ones that were there, and, and the proof is in the pudding, if you see it. So, that's what the facilities department has been up to. Um, secondly, I'm not sure if Patty loaded it, but we did put the capital improvement plan, um, into the drive to talk about that tonight. Uh, historically, I always come to you before I present it to the capital improvement committee. As much as that's at the end of July or into August, um, if we don't get this out of the way now, things happen, and we don't get to have you see it beforehand. Um, so with that, I'll talk about our twenty-six, twenty-seven capital improvement plan and how I would be prepared to present it to the capital improvement committee. So the first fund would be the vehicle replacement fund. We would be looking to, uh, put ten thousand dollars into that fund and not withdraw anything. So we have two pickup trucks, uh, we put ten thousand away. Every ten years, whenever that time comes up, we have that money there to go for the new pickup truck. Our plan and our hope and our goal is always ten years. Second fund is the school building capital reserve fund. This is our biggest fund with our most challenges out there. Historically, we've asked for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to be deposited. Um, we will continue to ask for that this coming year. But probably, moving forward after this year, we will look to increase that with all the increases out there in the world. We'll work on finding a, a number that's reflective of what we need, that we can talk about honestly, and present it to you before we present it to them. But we would look to deposit a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. With that, we would look to withdraw for our annual replacement flooring of twenty thousand dollars, exterior painting of ten thousand dollars, and one that unfortunately, um, I missed, and I will update it and send it back out to you. But this is a lift in our office area of our oldest building, so our ADA accessible lift to get from the basement to the second floor to the third floor. That lift took on a tremendous amount of work this year. It's band-aided, um, we were able to keep it operational by sending the motherboard out for repair. The repair was a guess, it was, it was a flip of a coin. We, the coin did land on heads for us, and we're very fortunate for that, but we also know that we have to get ahead of that next time. So lifts and elevators, they're made, um, for, to last us a, a certain amount of time, fifteen, twenty years, whatever they, that may be. Once you get to a certain point, the companies discontinue all the parts, they discontinue all the supplies. They come, they look at it, they charge you for three hours, and they barely even lift a finger and say, I can't fix this, because it's, it's too old. So this chairlift is a nineteen ninety-nine lift. There are no parts for it. Again, we flipped a coin, we got lucky. Um, so we would look to replace that chairlift next year, uh, for a hundred thousand dollars. Next up is the school technology capital reserve. I only speak about a deposit, because the deposit historically has been ten thousand dollars, until that changes per conversation. I talk about ten thousand bucks. Uh, next up would be the school site capital reserve. So this would be our pavement, this would be our track that we talked about a lot last year. Um, we would look to deposit seventy-five thousand dollars, which historically has been a number we've looked for. That number hasn't always made, made it through the process. Um, but we would look to deposit seventy-five thousand, and then we would look to take out a hundred thousand to start doing some pavement. Pavement in the district has been deterred, uh, year in and year out, and it's at the point now, it's, it's sidewalks, it's roads, it's driveways, it's everything, and we really need to, um, get on to that page. Next up, school capital equipment fund. Historically, we've deposited twenty-five thousand dollars. Next year, we would look to do, withdraw ten thousand dollars for our annual camera maintenance. Um, so that's replacement, that's repairs, that's up, updates, whatever we can out of that, that keeps our camera system going. Um, and on top of the camera system and the withdrawals, we have been very fortunate to receive many of grants over the last ten years to help aid that process. Um, and then, secondly, would be the ride-on floor scrubber here at Pembroke Academy for twenty-five thousand dollars. The one we have now, I believe, is a two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve. So we would look to get ahead of some of the repairs that, we've put repairs into it, we know we, the value isn't there to continue putting, putting money into that.
So I did put this in this afternoon, um, and since Josh was coming, I asked him to talk about it tonight, but I don't, we don't need to make decisions tonight, right?
Not at all.
This is for you to take and look at, um, but while he was here, I thought it would be good to just mention it, um, and take it with you and think about it, ask questions at, um, the next meeting if you have them. Just wanted to make sure that was correct, right?
Correct. And sometimes we kind of have the, oh, we gotta get this moment out, so we're way ahead of it this year.
Thank you for doing, thank you for being ahead of it, because this does sometimes catch up with us, and then it's, there's not enough time to talk about it, so thank you. I did miss that in the drive.
And I'll send a new one tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
And I, I literally, when did that go in? I, I checked, uh, it's so sick. Yeah, I was like, I don't remember when the last time I checked was, but it was like, that wasn't there.
The, uh, between break last week and different people being in and out, and then all the interviewing that's taken place.
We've been a month out there.
It's, uh, there's been, everybody's worked really hard to, to get interviews done and have candidates ready, so that's part of the, but I, I thought it was better to just
Absolutely.
care of it.
Yep.
Do you have more, Josh, that you want to tell us on that? On the CIP? No?
On the CIP?
Yeah.
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
The only, I always say it's a moving document, so things come and go. The only thing, the new thing added was that lift, which wouldn't have been identified, um, from all the other years that have been there. We have added some things, like, we have a aerial lift that we use in the district to get to some high spots within the building. We don't have budgetary figures, but, you know, you kind of walk it, walk by things throughout time, and you're like, hmm, I should have that on my list. So, we've done little things like that, but this document is nothing that specifically the ones that have been here haven't seen a thousand times. It's the same thing minus the addition of that, that chairlift.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Since we have you here, can I ask you a quick facilities thing? Have we ever looked at, okay, you know, like, PA comes in the main one, the cars line up there, parent pickup, and then there's students parked in the back lot. There's a stop sign for the parents, but there's not a stop sign for the students. Have we ever looked at putting a stop sign so that one car goes, one car goes? It's like, almost saw two kids get smashed yesterday, and I almost had a heart attack. I'm like, I'm gonna have to jump out of this car and save someone's life.
Yeah, my, my guess, we, we haven't, I mean, Dr. Morris and I have spent numerous hours talking about
I figured that
but I don't know
There must be a reason for lying.
specifically said that, and my guess is it probably hasn't come up, just because that's the straightaway.
Yeah.
And it's not like we have a four-section stop
Right.
intersection there, so it would kind of be off, but not, not anything we couldn't discuss.
I was just curious when I saw it. Nobody got hurt, but when you're leaving, especially pickup, the kids are running to those cars, and then they're flying this way while parents are trying to take a left as there's more parents coming in. So I was just curious if we ever thought of having a stop sign there for the student drivers, so they would have to stop a second.
Coming from the upper parking lot.
Yeah. Just curious.
We'll look at it.
Just an idea.
Pay attention to it.
I don't know. But I got a little nervous. Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I don't want to go down a huge rabbit hole, it just was in my mind, because it made me very nervous, and I think it really depends on who's there that day, too. There's some student drivers that are very, very careful, that will wave a parent through, that are ve, and then there's others, that I'm like
So, in justice speak parking, just because we're on it quickly, and into Ken's, Ken's comment, we have one way in and one way out, and that's, that's
Yeah.
we really get bind into
I know.
you know, you go to all these other facilities, some have a backup that are ten times worse than us.
Yep.
Some don't have backups, but the majority of these facilities have different accesses into their facility, and Pembroke Academy doesn't. So we've talked about going through fields before, which we lose our fields.
Right.
We've talked about getting them onto Route Three, which the state is not gonna give us a, an access point, a, a cut through to get out to Route Three.
Yeah.
We've talked about going through and by the tennis courts to get to the access road we own at Three Rivers and start using that. But then you lose tennis courts, you, you lose paths, you, you lose areas where our students specifically are in, that we've worked very hard to keep, uh, tires and vehicles out of those areas, because we know our students are there. Quite honestly, if we bought all the houses in between
I know.
and all the houses in between, we'd fix everything quickly.
Yep. No, I get it.
It's on the CIP, so we're, we're we're depositing, um, to have that happen in two thousand and forty.
Just wanted to ask, I figured it had been looked at before, but challenging. All right, exec board report.
It's me. Uh, so the exec board met on April ninth. Um, it was actually the, I think, the quickest meeting that the exec board has ever had. Um, we were in and out quite quickly, but, um, the good thing that came out of it was, um, Jess has been interviewing, uh, to fill her position, so as the assistant superintendent, uh, they had a lot of great candidates. Uh, they did narrow it down to two and ended up going with one who's, um, comes to us with a lot of experience. Jess knows her, um, through obviously the special ed circles. And, uh, she was with, at the Crawford Notch School for, the facility for like twenty years, so she's got a lot of
Catching Mountain?
Yes.
What did I say? Oh, my God. I, you know, I almost wrote it down, so I didn't mess it up.
Anyways, but you knew what I meant, I guess. But yeah, so she's, she was there for a very long time and lots of experience, so Jess is very excited to work with her. So that's
Awesome. Questions? No? Oh.
Uh, the one thing I, that's not on here, but, um, and I had not talked to Mark, the chair of the budget committee, but they had a retrospective on the seventeenth.
Neither Carrie, I had just had surgery, and Carrie was recovering.
So, uh, neither one of us attended that one, unfortunately. So, uh, as soon as I get with Mark and, you know, say that at some point, so.
That's okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to number seven, consent agendas. We have three.
Yep, if you'd like to start with the donation, I think Dan
Sure.
is for you.
Uh, so we have a, a town member, Kathy Crusen, who is a retired educator, who's made a generous donation. Uh, she actually comes from a family of educators. Her father was at one time principal of Pembroke Elementary School, which then became the High Street School and the Philip School. Anyway, um, she has made a jo, a donation to Pembroke Academy to be used for the Rachel Berger Scholarship, which is in honor of, um, an English teacher at Pembroke Academy who we lost, uh, four years ago. Uh, and it would be awarded to a Pembroke Academy senior looking to go into education.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah. Does anybody want to make a motion to?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the donation, say aye. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other two consent items came in today. They were, um, requests from staff members to continue to have their, um, children enrolled in the district. Um, and our schools have plenty of room and are happy to keep them if the board approves them to stay. So they're already here.
Mm-hmm. Both requests for tuition, or not, what is it?
Tuition enrollment in our schools.
One second.
Any questions, concerns? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, number eight, roof projects.
Me again.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, so I priced the, uh, roof project that was approved during the town meeting. So, within that, we, we work hard to get as accurate numbers as we can. Um, the roofing, construction, trade market over the last five years has been pretty hectic. Um, and we're happy to say that we had a hundred and forty thousand allocated for this, and in all instances of our pricing, we've come in way under. So we'll get to that part after. So moving on, our first price, uh, we're looking to redo the Pembroke Academy gymnasium roof, which is from nineteen ninety-nine, has ballast rock still on there, just to put it in perspective. Um, and looking to get ahead of anything major that might happen in the future with it. So our first price was sixty-nine thousand, five hundred. My personal opinion, professional opinion, whatever you want to call it, is that price came in so low, I didn't know what to do. Secondly, the next price was ninety thousand, two hundred. This company, they want to use us as a weekend job. Uh, they have no protection in that quote for gym floor, um, to protect our gym floor, which if you've been around, you know, that's a, that's a soft spot here in Pembroke. They're also not using one of the major brands of commercial roofing, uh, to match all our other roofs within the district. Um, all our roofs within the district are Firestone, which is now Elevate. They've just been bought out or changed names, but we've been very fortunate to have the same roofs on all our buildings, which is very important to me for warranties, for maintenance, for preventative maintenance, for all that stuff. Um, and then lastly, we received a price for ninety-nine thousand, five hundred. Um, and although I'm not one to recommend always going with a high bid, I will sit here and tell you sometimes that I do recommend it, and in this case, I do. And in this case, I do. They have done the majority of our roofs. They're there at midnight if we have an issue and they're here at 1:00 AM when we need them here. They've done the majority of our roofs in our district. They, this would keep our warranties consistent with all our roofs. In warranty base, sometimes we have roofs that are out of warranty, but the other three in the area have, have been redone and are in warranty. And sometimes that stuff pays dividends when other people are looking the other way. This company, Melantons, they will protect our gym floor. And quite honestly, they've spent significant time specing our roofs, keeping our warranties, doing some PMs, establishing budgets. And, and they would be who I would recommend. So I'm here to ask you for the okay to go with Melanton Roofing for 99,500.
Any questions?
Comments?
Yeah, the, the comment I'll make is, you know, as Josh said, that, you know, I'd love to save 30 grand, but it's not even in, you know, I, I, like you said, I, I mean, you couldn't, I was reading the report and I, I was, how can you even, it's not even in the ballpark. So something's missing and, you know, that, that's kind of sketchy when you see stuff like that. You get what you pay for. So. What's what?
Josh, what are we looking at for the lifespan, this roof?
So about 20 years. 15 is going to be warranty, 20 is going to be, you know, a good span, but we do our very best to extend everything. So you'll hear me today, yesterday, tomorrow, saying 99 is our famous number these days. So whether it's an HVAC or a roof or something, I'll, you're gonna hear 99 all the time. So this roof, 1999, here we are in 2025, well beyond that.
Um, I'm assuming the warranties though are prorated? Or is it a full warranty?
Yeah, it's a full warranty.
Full warranty, okay, great.
Yep.
Anybody else? Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All, all those in.
Do you need to specify the number?
Yeah, can you say the?
Yeah.
Melanson, event during the amount?
Post to approve at 99,500 for the Melantons.
Thank you. A second. Any other questions, comments? All of going for the Melantons roofing for 99, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Can I do one more?
Okay.
Well, just speaking of roofs, because the budget was 140, voted on by the taxpayers for roofs, I, I just want to be transparent and say I believe I should look at other roofs and spend that other 40. Specifically, it might not get me the commercialized flat roof area. I could probably find a small area, but I might not. But it definitely, I would be looking at barns or towers or garages where you drive around and you look and, yeah, those shingles are in time for replacement. So just being transparent, there's 40 on the table, it's approved. Let's get some other stuff on top of what we thought we were getting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 8B, I will totally give to Patty.
So general assurances, it's a very thick document and it's in your drive every year. A few years ago, the Department of Education added a spot for the Board Chair to, to initial each page and to add a signature. It used to just be my signature on the document. It is basically all of the rules and regulations, both state and federal, that we are required to follow if we're accepting federal funds and, which we do every year with our grants. There were some changes this year to the document and we, they advised when they sent it out, you know, make sure you look at what the changes were. So we did do a side by side and our grant coordinator gave me the changes that were made. We did get advice within the past day, I think, to maybe hold off until right before the due date of those documents because there's some concern about some of the language that was added conflicting with some pending litigation that we have, that some districts have. So I'm going to recommend that we put those on hold. The direction of the School Board Association and the Council of School Attorneys was if you have another meeting before the June 1st deadline, it's best to wait. And even suggesting that some districts add a meeting if they need to, just to hold off and see if there's anything that comes before that date. So with all that said, you can feel free to read them and be prepared, but we are going to hold on those.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions for now or no? We're good?
Start your reading through.
Yeah. It's a lot, yeah. I mean, for the, the bulk of the document is just the regular rules and regulations and discrimination and following the rules for finance and all of that stuff. It is very heavy material, for sure.
And just for whatever it's worth, I, you, you asked me specific, I read it in detail a couple of weeks going away, some other earlier years versions of these.
Yep.
Which are interesting.
Yep.
And I was in contact with some people this past week for something else anyway. We're doing educational lobbying in Washington and just getting my head around, you know, what is the level of obligation around executive orders versus federal statutes? There are clearly in their minds, mind, from what I thought, that, you know, they've basically pasted on an executive order in compliance with Civil Rights Act, for instance, that is in conflict with the Civil Rights Act. So, so there's no real easy way out of this except to say that on the one hand, you know, we probably have to sign whatever the thing is eventually anyway, but when push comes to shove, you follow the law, not the executive order. So I, I think we just need to keep our, you know, our ways about it.
And I think that's how I came to feel a little more comfortable about the Title VI order that we were asked to sign is that, you know, it doesn't matter what we sign, we're gonna follow legal advice. And if there's a conflict, we're gonna let other people handle that for us. So, but I don't want to put grant funds in jeopardy by not signing something too, so. We'll hold.
And can we sign it with reservation?
No, they have to be, we, one district uploaded them and missed one initial and it got sent back. So some of our districts have completed them already, but you haven't, so that was good for us to be able to hold.
No, I mean, when I say reservation, I mean like, you know, we, we're signing this, you know, and, and I, for lack of a better term, under protest.
Yeah, no, I.
Because, you know, there is this conflict and we don't, you know.
Yeah, we don't, we, we don't have any opportunity to do other, anything other than initial sign and upload it directly into the system, into the portal.
That said though, you know, the board is, is free to speak its mind.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and to issue its own, for lack of a better word, signing statement to public. And to say that, you know, our primary obligation is to follow federal laws and executive orders are not federal laws. Full stop. Right, so.
Good point. Thank you. And see, I'll also turn up.
I do.
Okay.
So I, this, I have this because we have a meeting tonight, but I just, it comes with caution from Amber that tomorrow is actually the deadline for POs and spending. So there's going to be money released. So the, you know, it looks like a lower balance, but it's, nothing's been pulled over yet. So the school's deadline is tomorrow. If they're, if they think they're gonna need something between now and the end of the year, we ask everybody to order it now so that Amber knows what is going to be pulled over. So your balance will be higher than this. It's only 1:35 tonight, but that's, that will increase. But I wanted you to see in each area where there are funds outstanding, so. You got the, I think, yep, expenditure report was put in there, right? Was the, the summary is, okay. So, okay, that's it.
Thank you. All right, it's number nine, we have the 25, 26 School Board Meeting Schedule.
Yes, so Lexi created a schedule based on the past years. So if you wanted to change anything, it, it is good for everyone to keep to the same days of the week because we have so many boards meeting and everybody sort of has their own day. She did, I haven't reviewed this to the calendar for next year, but she did make sure that there was no conflict with school vacations, holidays and such. So there shouldn't be any mistakes, but if you review it and let me know. January last year, we did hold a date in the middle because of the NBC meetings and so she put that in there again, just in case we need to have a meeting. But other than that, it's this, it's the traditional first and third Tuesday at 6:30. So if you see anything.
I'm sorry, I was.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Yeah, and you can always feel free to change them as we go if, if there's a conflict too. But in general, it's, we kept it the same. And then the other, the other document that we put in there, there, we have an account transfer and I was sort of struggling with, I'm supposed to bring it if it's over 1,000 so that, does that mean that if it's up to and including $1,000, it doesn't need board approval? And that was my assumption, but I just wanted you to know that we are transferring $1,000. I, I mean, the board did say over 1,000, so I'm assuming.
Yes.
That we're fine with this one, but I still wanted you to see it. I'm, I'm fine with moving ahead with it and I already initialed it, but I just, full transparency, wanted you to know that there was a $1,000 transfer. That was all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have anything else on nine before we do, look at policies?
Okay.
Can I just step in here? Maybe we should have done it earlier. We're gonna, policies might take a little bit of time here.
Yeah.
Do we need the principles for non-public? Do you want to do non-public before we do the policy? So they don't have to. I mean, I don't know, there's a lot of policies on there, so I don't know.
Are we doing anything?
There's only one.
You don't.
We have.
A lot of the first readings.
First reading. Okay.
So, yeah.
I just want to make sure.
We, I mean.
And Sharon's got this, I know, she's. No. Yeah. Do you want to go over any of them? Like, are there some easy ones that? We had some that we could, you know.
Sure.
We could at least do those and then the first readings are easy, we just move them.
Yes, so the first readings, we have some policies that are recommended for purging and rescinding. That would include GCR-A-A, IF, JICD-A and JICD-B. And then as well as JJID and JJID for TRS and PA. So those are all recommended to be rescinded and. Policies on our agenda didn't capture some of the policies that were supposed to be on the list. So I think I've got your, I know which ones you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, we'll act on them. We don't have to act on them tonight.
Okay, we can act on them.
Yeah, usually first reading we don't, but it's good to make note that some of them are going to be rescinded.
We'll usually just move those up.
Yep, just move them up to the second.
And then write a little note next to it, rescind.
Yep. So we don't forget. Yeah. Okay. If, if. Well, you could act on the second meetings too, that's up to the committee if you feel like those are ready. I wasn't prepared to act on the second meetings, were you? Yeah, okay, move them to third, yeah. So the policy IMG, the third reading, so we can move to accept that policy?
Yes, is that the one we're accepting with the administration?
Yeah.
Admin, yes.
Admin edits.
Anyone? Question? To.
I make a motion to accept the IMG policy with admin edits.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving IMG, say aye.
Aye.
Do you guys real quick wanted to ask a couple of questions? I know you guys had some questions that were kind of like, I'm not able to answer. Okay, last.
I don't know that there. I, I just want to see if we can find a more efficient way of managing these. And one of the things we talked about, I mean, I feel like we need to try to get a scope of what the entire bucket of policies looks like so that we know how to, you know, go along the labor, so to speak. Because otherwise, these just feel like the law keeps coming back down, so again, again, again.
So we have, Ashley, I think two years ago, created a policy master sheet that I can share with you. So that's what I've been working from. And basically, when the fall and spring updates come from the School Association, School Board Association, we get those on to keep your required by laws up to date. And then we started going backwards to get, and that's why there's so many, they're so old. So, you know, through COVID and busy times, the board was making sure they were in compliance with the law, but no one ever went back to the 1990 policies that have been sitting there. So if I share that sheet with you, what I did, I made a copy and then I sorted by date. And that's what I was trying to do was pluck the older ones off. So I can share that with you and then you'll, you'll see. And it's a great key, it shows which, which ones are required by law, which ones you have when, when they were updated. So I'll share that with both of you. Yeah, they don't even exist.
Um, one question I had for you, Patty, is are we required to go through all three readings? Is that an official school board policy?
No, you, you don't have to do three, you can do two. But you do need to have it on there for discussion and then you could approve it at the next meeting. You can't do it on the first. You could do it, you could do it on one if there was an emergency. Otherwise, no.
Can we all get that, like, master?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna share it with, well, I might be able to share it view only. I just don't, I want to make sure that as she updates it, you'll see it. So I think I'll just share it view only and that way, that way. Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. I was gonna, if you wanted me to share the originals that you could make a copy of, then you could do sort it. Because if you have view only, you can't sort, right? You just save a copy. Or can you still save a copy if it's view only?
Should be.
Oh, okay, well, then that will solve that too. Okay. Yeah, I'll have her put it in the board drive.
I think the other question they had too was, so you've done this forever and ever and ever, so when the emergency policies come through, do they come through the New Hampshire School Board Association to the superintendent? And then the superintendent just knows to bring it to a school board meeting? Or how does that work?
The, you also get them. So they come in those, you get the, you should be on the School Board Association email list. They send them out usually September and April-ish, but depending on the legis, legislative sessions, some bills go into effect a little bit later, so they're, they're behind sometimes. But those will come and it's usually a link. And if you have the login, you can, you'll get the list of policies. So you'll all get them and see them. And those are the, usually the priorities. Sometimes there will be updates to laws that aren't required to be in policy and that's where you can sort of decide because sometimes it's better, less is more. We have to follow the law whether you have a policy or not. And having a, you know, that's where you got to this huge binder of policies. And, and if you just keep the ones that are required by law, then you'll be able to update them every three, three years like you're supposed to and not like 30 years. So.
Does that help too? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, and the next, number 11, Public Comments. Think we can skip Public Comments. Anybody else? Oh, boy. There's three minutes on there.
You want me to read it for you?
No, I have this handy dandy thing.
I forgot.
So I blew it up so I can read it. All right. So. School Board has the need to go into non-public session for NHRSA 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2 for A, B and C, which are, A is the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges. or the investigation of any charges against him or her. B is the hiring of any person as a public employee. C matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the school board. So vote to go into non-public session at, let's see the clock, 7:40. Honorable call vote. Ken? Sharon? Carrie?
Yes.
Jean? No, yes. We'll come out of non-public at 8:30. And I'll just make the motion to seal the minutes of non-public for the appropriate portion. Anybody? A second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I'll make a motion to nominate.